Nutrient-rich soil amendment handles all types of food, so meat, bones, dairy, it's all that can go into it. Your vegetable scraps, coffee, coffee filters. It uses about one kilowatt hour of power, which would cost about 10 to 15 cents per cycle. And then, as I mentioned, the resulting end product is a nutrient-rich resource that has many uses and benefiting homeowners and communities as a whole. I think actually the sound is working. I can hear through my headphones, so maybe I'll switch over to that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here, I'll end the call. Okay, sorry about that. I'll get back to the presentation. So yeah, you're left with a nutrient-rich byproduct. And so what can you do with it? Well, it has many uses. It's a, we call it fertilizer. So it can go into your soil just like a regular fertilizer. And we have a guide that explains to our residents how you can do this properly. You can add it to a backyard composter, any type of backyard composter, it'll work well in. You could integrate it into a leaf and yard waste system. You could drop it off at a compost site, at a local farm, community garden, or of course, it can be added to a green bin. But it is a very versatile material. And ultimately with our programs, we help you figure out what's going to be the best solution for your community. So from an environmental standpoint, when you look at the carbon footprint of the food cycler, it's a very clear impact over a seven-year period. It's actually a net negative carbon solution. So the graph on the left breaks down the emissions. And while there are some upfront emissions from, you know, manufacturing and energy use during the life, these are far outweighed by the emissions avoided from food waste not ending up in the landfill. So you can feel good about using the food cycler overall. It ultimately prevents more emissions than it's produced. So in addition to the environmental impact, the traditional method of managing waste is just a heavily burdened system with costs at every single step. But the food cycler is a decentralized solution that reduces these unnecessary costs, reduces greenhouse gas emissions, and yeah, infrastructure costs to municipalities and residents. So the food waste that's created right in the home can just be easily managed right in the home. So for residents, one of the biggest benefits is how easy and clean the experience is. Typically, food waste is associated with the ick factor. It's smelly, it's wet, it's moldy, creates a mess. It's not very nice to deal with. But because the food cycler turns it into a dry odorless end product, this ick factor is gone. And so, you know, one of the best results is just how much nicer your trash is to deal with. And so one of our residents actually sent us this photo. It was her little bag of garbage after the end of the week. It's basically just plastic and dry goods. So you're producing way less garbage and it makes a big difference in the home. So our food cycler program is an established and proven solution for food waste management with a participation rate over 90%. We have an average diversion of about 250 kilograms per household per year of food waste being diverted. Every community has experienced an additional benefit of just increased awareness of food waste. So, you know, residents by seeing and looking at the food that they are producing in the home, they're actually more aware of it. And they are now indicating to produce less food waste overall. So that's a big win for, you know, the community and just everybody in general. So our municipal programs are a 12-week pilot program to test the viability of the food waste solution in your community before considering a community-wide rollout. How it works is residents would sign up to receive a fully funded or fully subsidized food cycler from you, the municipality. Over 12 weeks, they use their unit and track the number of cycles they've completed each week. Then at the end, participants will keep their food cycler. All we ask is they complete a short survey so we can fully evaluate the program's success. We then compile all of those results and present them back to you in a final report or a feasibility study. At that time, we would also present a plan for expanding the program to more households if that was the direction that was wanted. And we would work with staff to do that. So pricing for our programs is again pretty straightforward. We provide a discount, reducing the retail price by 50%. This is our municipal discount. Then you pay the remaining amount subsidizing or fully funding the units. So an ECO three ends up costing $300 and an ECO five is $400. There's a few options about the program. So we can either have residents choose which model best suits their needs or the municipality can pick one unit to offer to all residents. And that's something that we would also work with staff on to figure out what's going to be the best size for your community. So for the initial pilot, I would recommend somewhere between 50 to 100 households for your program. That size would provide a really good sample size of data to get a, or to, yeah, to think about a strategic rollout across the rest of your community should you decide to move forward with a program. So let's say you fully subsidize 100 food cyclers based on a 50/50 split of units between ECO three and ECO five. That would be a total of 35,000 plus shipping and taxes. But of course, we can adjust that depending on the unit chosen and the scope of the program. It is, so that is just a starting point. We're always happy to work with you to figure out what's going to be the best for your community's needs and budget. So lastly, I just want to go over some reasons that may resonate with you as you consider whether you should pilot with us. The first is that you have the opportunity to trial this technology at well below market rates and test a diversion, a food waste diversion solution before fully implementing. You also get to see some immediate and impactful benefits like waste diversion, lower disposal costs and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. But overall, you can provide your constituents with a low-cost service while being a steward for the environment. So that's always nice. So I welcome the township of North Stormont as a partner in the fight against food waste as I think this program would be a great fit in your community. Today, all I ask is you receive the presentation as information. And should you be interested in partnering with us, that you refer to staff for a report and recommendation. So thank you so much. I will stop sharing my screen and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Maddie. So I'll start with the questions from council. Anybody have any questions in regards, so there's a few, like the lifespan of the unit? What are we looking at as far as the anticipated time that it lasts?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the lifespan is seven to 10 years. The ECO five is fully repairable. So, you know, if a part breaks down, it's going to be covered under warranty and we can repair it so that it keeps working. The ECO three is less repairable unfortunately, but we still have, both units will have a three-year warranty on them. And we are happy to work with customers to make sure that the units are living as long as possible. At the end of the lifespan, when it's not working anymore, we've tried to fix it as much as possible. We work with e-waste facilities in the region to make sure that that unit is properly disposed of and recycled. It is 100% recyclable at the end, so just making sure it ends up in the right place is important.
And in regards to communities that you do have the food cycler in there, what's the percentage? Because there is people, even if you give it to them, that would not use it. But what's a percentage that you would see aligned with a municipality similar to North Stormont?
Yeah, so it's a really great question. It's hard for me to say a percentage. Most of our programs, I guess, South Stormont did 200 units and I believe they sold out. So that might be a good comparable. But I think for the beginnings of our program, it looks to be about 5 to 10% of households receive food cyclers. And those programs typically sell out. And this goes really fast. People pick it up really easily. But, you know, when there is no, when there's no cost barrier, I think people are really excited about an organics program and they're really willing and wanting to try it. So, and it just depends on the community, but we're always happy to work with staff. Maybe we could do an expression of interest just to see what the participation rates are going to be like.
And my last question is, and then I'll go to Adrian or to Councilor Bageli. My last question is, do you have any municipalities that will just subsidize a portion where the individual still has to buy or pay for the unit with subsidies from the municipality? Is that something that you also is offered?
Yeah, yes, that's a great question. So that's how our programs initially started. We were doing a subsidy model where the resident was paying a larger portion of the food cycler. And it worked well initially, but the issue is when it comes to expanding, that's when participation really slows down because the cost barrier gets in the way. So not everyone is willing or able to pay for something like this. So incorporating it into the tax base is the best way to get good participation, we've seen. But with that said, we are happy to, yeah, be a little bit flexible on the model. If you want to do a subsidy, something around $50, some communities do that and those programs work really well. But yeah, happy to work on with you on that and figure out what's going to be the best.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilor Bageli.
Hi, Maddie. Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting technology here. I just had a question if you've had any experience with basically managing these assets as a township portion. So if it's rolled out in a pilot program, I guess it would be very small numbers. But managing these longer term, as far as if there's damage to the unit who's liable for something like that, making sure these are returned, so in case of rental units or things like that where people might move out, just accounting for these units. Is that kind of, have you got to that point in any of these pilots yet where you're kind of looking at that second phase?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question. So we have gotten to that point with a few municipalities. So one of them in particular is Nelson, B.C. So they have food cyclers in about half of their household population, so 2,500 food cyclers. What they've done is incorporate it into, it's now a bylaw. So they own the units. It stays in that house. The unit serial number is tied to the civic address. And then there is a fine if the unit is missing when that person moves and somebody moves in. So that's kind of how they have done it. I think that way has worked really well, but it is something that we think of and we are talking to our municipalities about. we are talking to our municipalities about because uh, it's a big consideration. But yeah, tying it to the civic address has been so far the best method.
Thank you very much. So uh, again, that will be council's uh, this question. We're going to talk some more. We can go through our uh, CAO and our administration to get back to you, but I do appreciate the presentation and bring in information on this food cycle. I think there's a lot of people out there that that would support something like this. I just, my only thing, and we can have the discussion, the, the new toy is always something where you got, I just would, I don't know how you contract to make sure that they're in the houses, but they're actually being used and not just put aside on the, on the shelf. So can you maybe just before ending this, add to, to that comment?
Yeah, absolutely. And so we haven't had any negative issues like that where you know, people are destroying it or or selling it or um, not that we've seen or heard feedback from our uh, you know, one hundred and seventy-five municipalities. I think people, it is, I know, like another appliance, do we really need another appliance? But it does make a really big difference in the house that people want it to work. They want to keep it and they want to keep using it uh, long-term. So I guess that's just my anecdotal feedback, but I'm always happy to uh, provide some more information um, offline. I'll do some more research and get some feedback for you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and uh, we'll hopefully stay in touch.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for having me. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Maddie. So moving on to the adoption of minutes of our previous meeting, Mr. Clerk.
Moved by Councilor Bagel, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham. Be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as presented. Regular meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Thank you. Any questions in regards? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to the adoption of minutes of our committees and local boards.
Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bagel. That the council of the township of North Stormont accept the following committee minutes as presented for information purposes. Raisin Region Conservation Authority Board of September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Are we doing them separately? So any questions in regards to raisin? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's not really a question, it's more a comment and it equally applies to the South Nation uh, topic as well. Just to continue to to make council aware, fees have been frozen for a number of years for the services provided by the conservation authorities. And when they freeze the fees, effectively then the tariff has to make up the difference because the processes can't be reduced from what they are on the various services that a CA delivers, which ultimately means that those fees that would otherwise go to the people who are benefiting um, or the, the, the cost that would otherwise be covered by the people who are benefiting from the activities provided by the conservation authority are actually being borne by our ratepayers. So again, we've, uh, we've um, put letters out uh, to the ministry about this. The CAs are clear that, you know, uh, for a couple of years it's tolerable, but now it's getting to the point as we come into budget for the CAs as well, um, that at some point, uh, we're going to be asking, or the cost for these activities provided by the CAs is going to be borne by the tariffs, um, which ultimately come back to the municipalities and ultimately comes back to people who aren't directly benefiting from, from those services. So anyhow, it's really just a point to, to bring forward, make sure that council is aware of the fact that uh, when fees get frozen at a conservation authority, that cost tends to get borne back to our, our rate player, ratepayers, which I don't think is the right thing to do. And again, as a, as a chair of South Nation, and I suspect Raisin Region has also done this, we've, we voiced our concern up to the minister about that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, so all in favor of accepting the report. Motion is carried. Moving on to item eight point two in regards to South Nation Conservation Authority.
Moved by Councilor Bagel, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham. That the council of the township of North Stormont accepts the following committee minutes as presented for information purposes. South Nation Conservation Authority Board of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to receiving of our monthly staff reports and recommendations uh, in regards to stop control on Fourth Street and Concession, Concession Street West.
Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bagel. That the council of the township of North Stormont receives report PW fifteen, twenty twenty-five and approves the relocation of the existing stop signs at the intersection of Concession Street West and Fourth Street Champagne Street from the east-west approaches to the north-south approaches, thereby establishing Concession Street West as a through road funded through the Public Works operational budget.
Thank you. So I'll start, so just quickly, so our Road through, our Director of Public Works is not uh, present with us tonight, but uh, in regards to, I'm not sure with the other members of council, I did get approached by, I would say maybe four now that, that have been addressing concerns over that intersection. So uh, we'll just start slightly. I see uh, Councilor Bagel. So we'll start with the discussions and evolve into hopefully a resolution. So Councilor Bagel.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate uh, the opportunity to speak on this. I had, my, my children were actually students of that school when they were much younger. They're a lot older now, but this has been a problem that has been increasing with growth in our area. Even back then, drop-off times in the school and end of school day, the traffic coming through those intersections and being that it's offset a little bit and people coming off either County Road thirteen, coming straight through or off of, of County Road twelve, they're already, they're, they're, they're coming in at a little bit faster speeds to begin with. And that translates in that short little span, getting over to Concession Street there. Just flipping those stop signs is not going to mitigate this problem. You're just flipping one, the problem from one side to the other. I've read through the report. I would be of the, of the opinion, just through personal experience, seeing it over the years, that a four-way stop is justifiable there. It will slow people down. The offset of the sight line with the school, especially when they have La Creche, the nativity scene, large nativity scene setup, it's very difficult to see and it can be quite problematic. So I would be looking at the alternative measure of instituting a four-way stop at that location.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Shane.
Yes, so myself, I've heard from a few residents about this issue. Been on that street, it's, it's, I have to agree with Councilor Bagel. It's very busy with the daycare, the school. It's a school zone. We also have received complaints of people coming, heading for the subdivision in the back, traveling fast. I think changing the stop sign, the kids walk there, they're already used to a stop sign one-way, you're going to confuse kids, there's too much traffic. I would agree myself also with a four-way stop and just slowing the traffic down, it's too busy.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Sounds like we're getting consensus here because again, uh, yeah, I saw the discussion on social media and, and it was really good constructive discussion back and forth and and I, I want to thank first of all, the public for having a positive and a respectful discussion there. And I agree, having driven through that intersection, although it is offset, it's not offset by much. So from my perspective, a four-way stop is, is going to be better. It's going to be safer for everybody. I would rather have somebody sitting there thinking that they, they need to take a second look than somebody who's just quickly going through. So I agree with the other two counselors. I think four-way is the way we want to go. On this one, I think it'll be safer for, for everybody.
So I'll just add my two cents. So even though you're saying it's not offset much, I find if you're coming from twelve and you're going by the school, if you look down Champagne Street Extension, you can see it nice and clear. But if you look the other way, as you mentioned, that offset does make it. And the people that are going into the, the newer subdivision, which is quite a bit of traffic that travels there morning and night, is uh, I think deemed appropriate to look at the four-way. With a school back in the day and still today is, you have buses that stop in, it's one big unit, but the fact that there's a daycare, we're seeing multiple drop-off. We see it here in, in Burwick, which is not on the roadway, so we have the luxury of having the, the loop around, but the traffic is, is non-stop. So every morning and night, all the parents that are driving in is uh, is creating a lot of traffic on that back street. And I think it, now we only got to be careful in regards to, there's many intersection in our township. And I know people are saying, hey, let's uh, so the fact that the school, the offset, the traffic count with the fact that daycare, so deems that I think uh, it's case by case, but in this case here, I believe that the four-way stop will trump the, to, to either reverse the, the, the stop sign or just to stick to a, a two-stop intersection. I think the, the discussion has been had, I'll bring it to a vote. So unless there's any further discussions, seeing none, I'll...
Is this something we can, we can amend this current motion to be able to proceed quickly with?
So this is just accepting the report? Can we uh, give directions?
Through the chair, could you read the motion again? Hayden, please.
The original motion?
Correct.
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives report PW fifteen, twenty twenty-five and approves the real, the relocation of the existing stop signs at the intersection of Concession Street West and Fourth Street Champagne Street from the east-west approaches to the north-south approaches, thereby establishing Concession Street West as a through road funded through the Public Works operational budget.
Through the chair, administration anticipated that the majority of council would support a four-way stop. So what I would suggest is defeating that motion, there is a second motion that has been drafted to adopt a four-way stop.
I apologize. I have the second motion already written up. So yeah, so I'll bring this one uh, to a vote if we can defeat and then bring the, the new motion forward. So uh, as motion has been read, all in favor of the motion? Seeing none, against? Motion is defeated. So with that, Mr. CAO, can I just bring the new motion forward for members of council? So go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
With a mover and a seconder?
So I'll uh, ask for a mover. Moved by Councilor Bagel, seconded by Councilor Shane.
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives report PW fifteen, twenty twenty-five and approves the installation of stop signs on all approaches at the intersections of Concession Street West and Fourth Street Champagne Street, thereby establishing a four-way stop at said intersection funded through the Public Works operational budget.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to item nine point two is in regards to elections, voting system award.
Moved by Councilor Bagel, seconded by Councilor Shane. That the council of the township of North Stormont approve report admin nineteen, twenty twenty-five from the CAO clerk to award the supply of a telephone and internet voting system for the twenty twenty-six municipal election to Votes Canada and further authorize the CAO slash clerk to sign all applicable documents for the contract.
Thank you. Mr. CAO, anything you want to add?
Through the chair, I think the, the report provided a fairly clear explanation. This was done collaboratively through all of the townships and SDG, including the City of Cornwall. It was uh, the, not just the votes, was not just the highest bidder, but they were the lowest bidder. So I am recommending as CAO that we accept this or council endorse this and provide me with direction to, to sign the, the document.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Yeah, I'm fine. We know, we all know that electronic voting is the least expensive. And again, the fact that you're collaborating and making sure that we're getting a, an established vendor, that's great. My one question would be is, do we know whether or not this particular vendor offers any, uh, within, within the scope of, of their work, do they offer anything in terms of proactive fraud detection? So uh, for example, notifying a caller that somebody, that, that, that they have appeared to already have voted, um, and therefore that might alert somebody to call the municipality and say, well, look, I didn't vote or whatever. Or because it's electronic and can be done over the computer IP, like if there's high traffic on certain IP addresses, some of those you might expect. Like again, if we're doing electronic here in the office, you'd expect to see our IP address a lot, but unexpected ones, uh, that type of thing can, 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 can trigger potential uh, election fraud uh, activity. Again, we had some concerns from the last, uh, from, from the last election. I just wanted to be sure that if this system can and does provide any type of proactive detection of potential fraud with alerts, et cetera, that, that we can be sure that that's included.
As council is aware with, for full transparency, I think everybody on council knows my technological limitations. I, I can indicate however, that um, the, all of the RFQ submissions were scrutinized quite heavily by SDG IT and Mr. Saint Oge provided his input for all three vendors and Votes certainly got the highest score from SDG IT. I can certainly defer your question. I can try and collect that from Mr. Saint Oge, but I cannot specifically answer your very valid questions.
Yeah, that, that'd be helpful. Again, I'd just like to understand that a little bit better if we could. Again, I'm not going to stop the process here. I think it's the right way to go. And my hope is that especially with, as technology continues to advance with AI and whatever, that security is advancing at, at at least the same pace.
If I can suggest possibly reaching out to Mr. Saint Oge and just might be getting a, a response to the question. And I'm sure uh, to follow up with the fact that the six other municipalities plus City of Cornwall, everybody's looking at exactly that. So moving forward to make sure that it's uh, we are protected in that.
I will provide a written response to all of council, yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. With that said, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Item nine point three in regards to Earl McMillan Drain Engineer's Appointment.
Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bagel. That the council, that council appoint Shade Group Inc. as the Drainage Engineer to update Earl McMillan Municipal Drain Engineers Report under section seventy-eight-one of the Drainage Act, RSO nineteen ninety.
Thank you. Sean, would there be anything you want to maybe add? Just I think it's that standard uh, process, but go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. It's uh, one of the first formal steps of kicking off this process, a public process, I might add. At this point, I don't have much to add, but council will. Here, as this develops and be part of a meeting to consider, probably spring, summer, once things evolve.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving to the Moose Creek Hall Intact Insurance Compliance.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by Councilor Bagel. That the council of the township of North Stormont receives and approves report number REC seventeen, twenty twenty-five submitted by the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities and further authorizes the awarding of the contract for the Moose Creek Hall Ice and Snow Shield Project to David R. Coleman, General Contractor. And that council authorizes the Finance Department to transfer funds in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars from the Working Capital Reserve to facilitate completion of this work order as per the submitted quotation.
Thank you. So it would appear that we are in need of a lot of receptacles from what I can see, but uh, I'll take questions or this, uh, does council prefer to, we'll have our Director maybe just give us a briefing on the...
Yes, to the chair, we've been um, not targeted, we'd been asked to do an inspection from Intact. They, they pick a number of buildings within a municipality. And so as you've seen their report from Intact, there were smaller issues as far as receptacles and, and exit signs. So um, they had a list of buildings where I attended with the inspector and we went through the buildings, what was missing. So they, they issued us a report, completion date to be done as a project two, compliance number two. And now we had one left was the Ice and Snow Shield for the Moose Creek Hall, which was a compliance number four with... a compliance number four, with the date was a little bit longer to allow us to find a contractor and funds. The first day they gave us was November, it was pushed back till December 12th. So this is why I've been finding council to get this done. So we're in compliance with our insurance.
So if I can add the reason, because my first thought was through the engineers, through the building of this new hall, why was this not caught? But from what I understand, is it the fact that we had switched to go to a tin roof versus a shingles? And this is where so why was it not?
Through the chair, they had provided us with an option during the build, and this was right, right after COVID. So some of the material were difficult to source. We did get the opportunity to put the tin roof on, which lasts a lot longer, and we got a significant reduction because of the color. So internal staff decided that we will go with tin just because of the longevity. There was never a requirement, according to our engineers, to have snow guards on the roof. And the director of rec can correct me if I'm wrong. The only suggestion which we did introduce for snow guards was at the back of the property to protect our heat pumps, I believe, was is that accurate? So it was it was they were strategically installed. And because it's only a one story building, according to the engineer, they weren't required around the entire roof of the building. Now that did not incorporate the sidewalk that was installed, which does pose risk to pedestrians. So that the sidewalk that was added after the fact does create a bit of a challenge for us. Is that accurate?
Yeah, through the chair, the issue was the sidewalk around the building. If there would have been no sidewalk in the plan as they were done, where the two installation that have been done ice and snow shield would have fit inspections. But having a sidewalk all around the building requires us to have ice and snow shield all around the roof.
Any questions? So in regards to intact, it's like a lot of time when you deal with the building code, you have where you're compliant until you need to, whether request a building permit to upgrade to the standards. Is this standard, like I've been now many years on council, but to have the insurance company now go through, is that is that something new that that we're seeing?
This is new because we did change insurance and now we're intact risk management, which is the largest municipal insurance provider that I believe so and for municipalities. This is formality for them. The idea of this is they work for us to reduce as much the risk possible for municipality. So therefore they come to our buildings and they make inspection leader. You're you're you don't have a proper GFI, you don't have this is to reduce the potential risk of any risk management. And when they did around Moose Creek, the sidewalks were there and says this is a huge risk for a municipality. So it's new that this, but now we're using them quite often. They got an intact risk management team. So anytime I have a questions or something, I'm not sure if we're covered, I do send this to the intact risk management and they come up with either we're covered or not, or what is proper procedure in order to have your event or they're brokers. So they're the one that that gives us the instruction of how to proceed for the to reduce the risk of the municipality.
And through the chair, I might add, and Pierre, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not a code, this is not a building code requirement. This is a requirement through our insurance company.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
So then will investing this offset our insurance costs?
I don't see this, through the chair, I don't see this going to offset their costs. It just reduces their risk.
I've always thought that risk equals cost when it comes to insurance, but okay.
Just where I'm going is in regards to say an older facility, I can see a new facility, you got to abide by the code. But an older, when you're looking at lit up exit signs and so there is facility. So if we're it's one thing changing a receptacle for a GFI, but it's another thing if you're now having to bring in power to light up for your it's just I understand that the safety aspect, but it can open like it it opens up a great, I know the risk, but to some it's identify where we need to. And if it offsetted the cost, similar to identifying where we're reducing the risk, so it reduces the cost. But if it doesn't, it's just putting more, again, more emphasis on on the fact that we need to comply with with and reduce the risk. I guess the new age of running, well, not just running a municipality, I think it's throughout any businesses as well, risk management. Thank you. So in regards, so now with aligned with the the snow guards at the 19, so see no further questions, all in favor, motion is carried. Item nine point five in regards to snow clearing contracts for 2025, 2026, Mr. Clerk.
Moved by Councilor Bagelley, seconded by Councilor Shane, that the council of the township of North Stormont receives report PW 17 2025 from the Public Works Department and approves that snow clearing at the specific locations be completed internally for the 2025, 2026 winter season, rather than awarding RFQ PW 002-2025 to an external contractor.
Thank you. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Dencham.
I think this is the case, but I just wanted to be sure. It is the municipality's responsibility to cover the cost of this under the ARC agreement? Or is it the responsibility of the rec individual rec groups in any way?
No, through the chair, the ARC agreement states that the municipality is to do the snow removal of the parking lots. We had several discussion about what do we do with entrance exit doors, who's going to take the responsibility? If you remember at the meeting of the whole, there was a discussion by one of the groups that says, well, when we're not at this facility, we don't have any reservations, but the township has a tenant in this building. Is it really the recreation's responsibility to go and clear the exits for the township tenant? Some other facility where they don't have a tenant, well, if there's nothing going on at facility for a week, maybe the 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 exit won't be clear for a week. But this needs to be done, especially where we have rentals. If you look at the Moose Creek Recreation, if we have we have a rental side of our side, right now they were hiring a third party, the recreation themselves, to do the sidewalk and the entrance. Fire halls used to be done by a third party and most of the time was a volunteer fireman cleaning up their own exit signs, exit doors, I mean. So these are things that, as you can see, like Monklin, Moose Creek Recreation and Moose Creek Fire Hall was a third party doing it. Now they want to bring it back in house. But we'll still need to do the Avonmore Ambulance Bay and Fire Hall, North Stormont Place where the doctor's office and the library is, so.
That's a shared cost.
There's a shared cost with them. But at the end of the day, this needs to be done for a liability. Somebody falls on within our entrance or sidewalks, we have the liability on this and it's before it used to be third party, now we're going in house.
And again, the CAO and senior management did meet with the Public Works Superintendent yesterday. We expressed our concern. We need to ensure we have timely and consistent snow clearing and salting for these entranceways, not just for public safety, but for liability reasons. And we were assured by the Public Works Superintendent that they would have the resources to not just plow the parking lot, but also to clean the entranceways and to salt, both at the fire halls that they're planning to take over and the recreational facilities.
Yeah, just supplemental, my question was really who, according to the ARC agreement, is required to cover what costs? I'm perfectly fine that if if under the ARC agreement, the municipality is required to cover the cost, let's say for parking lot plowing and stuff like that, and we want to do that in house, we're saving the ratepayers money, absolutely. So I don't see there's any reason for that. It's more that, okay, if the if we had already agreed with each of the rec groups that they were to cover the cost, and now we're saying, okay, you don't have to pay anything and you're going to get it done for free, then I think maybe some of that cost should be recouped to to the ratepayers because although we're not handing money out, Public Works are doing something and we're paying their 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 salary, right? So.
Through the chair, so I understand what you're presenting, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but it's like I mentioned, if we have no event that, let's say, um, say, Avonmore, North Stormont Place has no events, township has two tenants in this facility, and now you want volunteers to go and clear their exit of our rental spaces?
Were they were they paying that cost in the past? Is that how it's laid out? Because I know we already have shared costs. Like if we've if we've already said, we have a tenant, which is the doctor, and as part of their rent, we keep their snow clean, then that's not a burden we would ever put on the volunteers. So maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not making it clear, but I'm not suggesting that the volunteers should do something. What I'm saying is if in the ARC agreement, municipality is already covering those costs, perfect, go ahead. If the if in the ARC agreement, the rec groups have already said, this is my cost, then they need to do it, you know, that's that's what otherwise we we have an ARC agreement that's that's performing no function whatsoever.
Yeah, so through the chair, they have a responsibility as responsible as a recreation committee when they have an event to make sure their exit doors and the front door is free from ice and snow during their events. Any other time, it's not their responsibility.
I think we need to confirm that the parking lot and the front door is very small portion of the front and the front end of what we're talking, which is a few separate issues. But yeah, do you confirm that the snow removal for the majority of the parking lot is part of the responsibility as a council?
That's as per the ARC agreement, yes. The only exception was Monklin, where there was a third party involved because we didn't have the equipment because it's too far. So they used to have a third party doing Monklin and part of Avonmore.
But we would still pay the bill. We would pay the municipality would pay.
Correct.
Party, not the rec group.
Correct.
Talking about the simple entranceways with a hand shovel. And there was no consistency. And we wanted to ensure that if the public works staff are there, quite frankly, if that needed work, and we can ensure that there's any that we got, during times, you know, that we're totally about to.
Yeah, and I tend to agree with, I think we're cluttering the conversation with other stuff because basically what we're saying here is one vendor bid $2,400 to clear Monklin District Community Center. That's a cost that the municipality would have had to have borne anyhow if we chose to go with that. But what we're what we're saying is let Public Works do that work because they can do it at a lower cost and the municipality will continue to bear it. I'm perfectly fine with that. And I think that's all that the motion is reading. Maybe we're getting into areas that's things I'm not asking.
If I can, or did you have a question? I'll take questions and then I'll.
Just a quick comment, actually. It would be nice in a case like this when we are looking at some quotes that were submitted and just the 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 statement that Public Works is anticipating or is expected to be more cost effective, it would be nice just to have a general sense that they kind of looked at the numbers that we could look at as a comparison. Great, now it's just our word saying we hope so, but there may be, who knows, depending on the weather, overtime incurred and things like that, and it may go over.
Well, and through the chair, we had hoped that the Public Works Superintendent was going to be here with the hard numbers. Unfortunately, he did have a family issue that he had to attend to tonight. So my apologies for that because I believe Blake could have spoken to the actual hard numbers, but unfortunately circumstances have presented themselves where he could not attend.
So the way I look at it, Public Works is in our town through snow events for dealing with whether it's the sidewalk machines that their tractors have, they are there to deal with taking the bulk. So I'll use the fire hall as an example, removing so that the doors are cleared. But mind you, the actual exit doors, just cleaning that little road because the snowplow is not going to go an inch from the garage door, just to clean that. I know for a fact that fire department identifying if there's ever heat loss or malfunction with a furnace, we have to have patrol or have somebody attend the fire hall every night to make sure that our trucks are in there full of water and you can't have that freeze. So through the the daily checks that it's nothing for them just to clear their their doors in front for that purpose.
And through the chair, unfortunately, the fire chief is not here. We were we were informed that the volunteer firefighters may not be able to clear the snow at all of the fire assets. So unfortunately, I can't expand on that without the fire chief here, but that was what was expressed at our discussion yesterday.
Okay. So right now, is it our public works that would have to get out of vehicles and clean the clean the doorway?
Correct. And and public works committed to doing that, yes, just like they said they would do at the rec.
They'll do the through the chair, they'll do the initial when they're there. If it happens to snow later on that evening and one of the recreation has an event, there'll be a recreation responsibility to make sure it stays, it gets cleaned up and the exit are cleared out. Because sometimes it'll leave you a pile beside the plow and then if it freezes over, we can't, they can't trouble it. So they they to they just mentioned to the roads department that staff will have to get out and do the exit when they're plowing each facility, including the fire halls.
Times are changing because I was there for 30 years and when you do your check every night, you have to have a fireman go and to take a scraper and literally take two minutes to clear in front of a door is a discussion that can I wasn't involved in the discussions, but that's just my my opinion.
Pierre, was through the chair, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. Was my overview of that discussion accurate for the fire halls?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
And I mean, if the intent is sort it out between between our it's just I'm just putting it out there because that's just how we do things or how I would love to do things in North Stormont. And that's just my opinion. Okay, any last questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion and motion is carried. Moving on to item 10, so there's no municipal bylaws, so going to our correspondence, Mr. Clerk.
Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bagelley, be it resolved that the correspondence as listed as items 11.1 to 11.7 on the agenda be received.
Thank you. Any discussions as far as our correspondence? Seeing none, all in favor, accepting the report, motion is carried. We do not have motion. So moving on to new business in regards to interlude, request for support to the interludes fundraising campaign. There is no resolution. So just brought forward, any discussions or questions from members of council? Go ahead.
Just it's obviously it's a great program. It is something we might want to look at as far as just for, I don't think it's appropriate giving donations to the township, but personally to buy a ticket or look at their silent auction. So just encourage people to have a look at that on the 27th and their silent auction the 20th to the 22nd. They can see the letter in our agenda package and learn more about it there.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Actually, there is no motion. We're we're in favor of help, support come the 27th. Thank you. So moving to our scheduled meetings coming up, we have our regular council meeting of November 12th, which will be held on a Wednesday with regards to Remembrance Day. So they change for I think it's our only one that this year that falls on a Wednesday and not our typical Tuesday. Incoming or events in our recs, my computer just shut down, so I don't have it in front of me. So again, we have so looking at craft shows, I know Chrysler's got theirs coming on, let me just get some dates, on November 1st from 10 a.m. to four. Monklin has theirs on November 9th, which will be held from 10 a.m. to 3:00. These are, I know my my wife loves the time of year when the Christmas craft sale, so if you can support. I'm move, oh, I'm just scrolling down. So we do also have the Christmas Craft Show November 16th, which is nice to see where they scattered them and not held them on, on the same date, which is November 16th from 10 to 4:00. If you look, there's also Haunted House Halloween in, in Moose Creek. There's weekly cornhole games, as well as their volunteer appreciation event on November 14th. We've got Chrysler's volunteer appreciation event, which is held, it doesn't have the date there, but I believe it's November 15th. And again, there's the ongoing Uker Bingo and all other activities throughout our municipality. So again, for our residents as well as council to enjoy. Thank you. Moving forward to closing remarks from members of council. Seeing none, we'll close. So moving on to ratification bylaw. Mr. Clerk.
Moved by Counselor Bagelley, seconded by Counselor Shane, be it resolved that the bylaw number 782025 being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratify council's actions at its regular meeting of October 28th be read a first, second and third time, passed, signed and sealed in open council on this 28th day of October 2025.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion's carried and adjourned.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by Counselor Bagelley, be it resolved that this regular meeting adjourn at 7:07 PM.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion is carried. And that is it. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you.